It's here, it's like geez Louise.
We're very motivated to get you out of here so you can start drinking your poison juice.
Yeah, it'll be a lot of fun.
Go, go, six o'clock.
I want to call to order the town of Atherton City Council meeting June nineteenth. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Is that recording?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Right. Anthony is record poll.
Right.
Usually I have to accept that I didn't so.
All right, roll call here.
Yep, roll call next.
Yeah.
Hullen.
Here.
Councilmember Widmer.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Hawkins.
Present.
Thank you. I'll note that Councilmember Golia has an excused absence.
Okay, so I'd like to start a meeting by a proclamation to designate June twenty twenty-fourth as Pride Month. But before I do that, I'd like to mention that today is June nineteenth, which is Juneteenth. And it's the day that we celebrate the end of slavery. And I thought it important that we acknowledge that and celebrate that day. So I'm gonna start with this proclamation. Town of Atherton proclamation designating June twenty twenty-fourth as Pride Month. Whereas the town of Atherton strives to promote the egalitarian principles of equality and justice for all people, recognizing that diversity of our communities is one of our greatest strengths. And on June first, twenty seventeen, opened the first ever LGBTQ plus Pride Center in San Mateo County in conjunction with the kickoff of Pride Month. And whereas San Mateo County is a proud partner in the journey toward LGBTQ plus equality, having in June twenty-fourteenth established the state's first dedicated LGBTQ commission to support the development of policies, programs, and resource that help create a community in which LGBTQ plus people are treated fairly, with dignity and respect in all settings, and where there's access to services that are welcoming, respectful, and responsive. And whereas the Pride Initiative of San Mateo County Health System has advocated for the welcoming environment for LGBTQ plus people who live and work in San Mateo County. And LGBTQ plus people have made important, varied, and lasting contributions to San Mateo County, our great state and nation in every field of endeavor and culture that enriches our lives. And whereas each year in June marks the anniversary of Stonewall Rebellion that gave birth to the modern lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender civil rights movement. And whereas flying the gay pride flag is a way to demonstrate that San Mateo County is a welcoming, inclusive county in furtherance of this proclamation. Now therefore, as Mayor of the town of Atherton and on behalf of the Atherton City Council, hereby designates June twenty twenty-four as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, and two-spirit Pride Month. Anthony, do we have anybody who?
There was a gentleman named Chris Sturkin from the county, but I don't see him available. So we'll make sure that they get the proclamation.
So yeah, let me know if they come and then we can let them.
Sure.
Get back on. Okay, so I'd like to open the meeting to public comments. The public comment portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on matters listed on the posted agenda as well as any matter not on the posted agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the posted agenda except by special action of the city council under specific circumstances. Speaker times for item, items not on the agenda, is limited to one minute. Speaker time for items on the agenda is limited to three minutes. So you can refer to the footnote at the end of the posted agenda for additional notice regarding public comments. Okay, we'd like to move on to disclosure of ex parte communications. Does anyone on the council wish to?
Well, you're gonna see if anybody wanted to make a public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, does anybody want to make a public comment? Sorry about that.
I have none online and.
In the room wanna make a public comment?
I guess not.
No, I guess not. I just assumed that you're right. I didn't call on it. Okay, so does anyone have any ex parte communications to declare?
I have none.
Nope.
All right, we're moving on to department written reports. Does anyone have any comments or questions on the written reports? So we have nothing to report out. There was no closed session tonight. So let's, let's move. Boy, we're moving quickly here.
Yeah, keep going, keep going. Don't talk about it, just do it.
Items one to nine. Does anyone wish to pull any items from the consent agenda or for discussion?
I have no comments.
Nope. No about the public.
Does anyone in the public have comment question?
Okay, bring back the.
Motion to approve.
I, I second that.
Okay, so the consent agenda passes?
No, we have voted.
Oh, we have to do because he's not here?
No, we always have to say all in favor.
Okay, all in favor. Aye.
Okay.
Do, Anthony, do we have to do a roll call with Rick not here?
No, because he's not here.
If there was a member online, if there was a council member online, you'd have to do a roll.
Only if they're online, okay, but not if they're. All right, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Open the public hearing for items ten and eleven. So number ten, consider ordinance amendment, chapter one point fifteen point nineteen of the Atherton Municipal Code, Green Building Code, and we have a report by Andre Ruhur.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So this item is coming back to you again. This time for an amendment to the municipal code. You previously had discussed the natural gas ban earlier this year during a workshop. And all this item really is is to bring the Atherton Municipal Code into compliance with the City of Berkeley decision where it was determined by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals that natural gas bans were preempted by federal law. And so all we've done here is to strike out the offending provisions of municipal code just to bring the town into compliance. After that decision had initially come down, we had stopped enforcing those provisions. This is, this is really just to bring the code in line with that, with that action. And here for any questions if you've got any.
Anyone have any questions on the council?
I have no questions.
Does anyone in the public have? Any public comment online?
I know that there was a member of TRC joined online, Mr. Farhad. But I don't see him requesting to make a public comment.
It looks like he's now raised his hand.
Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Atherton Council. Thank you so much for accommodating my time here in public comment. And thank you to the city staff for bringing this forward. I'll keep it short. We submitted some comments earlier today to the city staff. They were quite technical in nature. We believe there are some opportunities to clarify the intention of this code. You know, definitely makes sense to bring it in compliance with the most recent Berkeley ruling. And we feel that at the same time, there's some language changes that could make this more enforceable. So we encourage you to reach out to Peninsula Clean Energy, determine next steps as appropriate, and if necessary, and it comes down to us, we're happy to provide our input to improve the enforceability of these amendments. Thank you.
Wonderful. Anybody else have any public comments? None in the room, none online?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's introduction of the ordinance for first reading by title only.
Move to approve the first introduction by title only of the.
I second that.
I have a question, sorry. Sure. I didn't see that public comment from PCE about clarifying language on the ordinance. Is that?
It's something we can pick up when this comes back to you. As you recall, we're gonna bring some amendments to the ordinance back at some point in the future to address. We're taking out the electrification, but we wanna add back some other qualifications. That's what.
Okay.
The opportunity to add those to it at that point.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, second.
Again, okay, so moved. All we have to do.
We have to.
We have to vote.
Approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay. Adopt the attached resolution, so item number eleven. Adopt the attached resolutions adopting the twenty twenty-five operations and capital budget salary benefit resolution for unrepresented staff, twenty twenty-four twenty-five salary and classification schedule, GAN limit appropriations, and town master fee schedule. And I believe Robert's gonna give us a report on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council, and members of the public. Yes, before you is the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget and the accompanying resolutions. Adoption of all resolutions may be done by one motion. Just real quick, the staff is pleased to present the annual operating budget for our fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five. The council held four public sessions in the review of the town operational and capital budgets. Staff incorporated all city council feedback from the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget meetings. Presented is my staff report. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, the council can adopt again these accompanying resolutions all in one. If you have any questions, I open up to the council.
I have no questions.
No questions for me either.
Any public questions, comments? No?
I do have a comment.
Okay, not online. Okay, no, I don't see any in the room. So back to council for comment.
I have a comment. I just want to comment that this item, we have, we have heard and discussed and approved all along the way this season of budget season, all the things that are being asked of us to approve tonight. So I find them all in good order, and that's my comment.
Okay. I'd like to move that we approve the budget for the next fiscal year.
I'll second. Okay, so moved. So this closes out the.
Have to say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so this closes out the public section of the meeting?
Public hearing section.
Public hearing section, and now we're gonna go to the regular agenda. Before we do, I'd like to make a request of the council to see if we could move item fifteen to the beginning of this regular agenda. I have to leave for a medical procedure at seven thirty, so I wanted to make sure I had a chance to talk. And I was wondering if I could get approval from the council for that.
I'm okay.
So all, you're all okay with that?
I don't have a problem with it, but I'm pretty sure if we take the next three items, you're gonna, you're gonna be, you know, ready to do it, but, but it's fine. Yeah.
All right, so in that case, we're going to jump ahead here to item.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do a brief review and summary of the Atherton Earth Day celebration that we've been hosting for the last four years. The staff report includes a very brief summary of the history of Earth Day since around twenty twenty. And it culminates in a few of the recommendations that came out of the Environmental Programs Committee, some staff recommendations for options moving forward, and a little bit of a review, like I said, about what took place in this year's event. We think that it was a very successful event. Overall, we got a tremendous outreach. We did a pretty good job in terms of pulling some last minute items together, although we had some staff transitions in that time. And the determination from not only the Environmental Programs Committee, but also from staff is that we need to consider how we're gonna continue putting an event like this on for future. And some of those options were included in the staff report. Option number one being will we recreate what we've done in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four, where we make it an Atherton-centric Earth Day, held at Holbrook Palmer Park in an effort to get together with our community members, our neighbor, our neighbors, around the topics of sustainability, climate change, water conservation, things that, you know, relate to Earth Day. Do we want to consider as another option, the regional partnership like we considered in twenty twenty-three? Do we want to consider some hybrid of our option number one, where we extend different events and activities such as a speaker series, a film, service project, or something like that over two or more days? Or is there another option that we want to consider? And then the last component of that is if we do plan to consider holding an Atherton-centric type Earth Day, would the council support bringing in someone to assist staff with planning activities that lead up to and on the day of the event and have them start probably sometime in this calendar year to begin some of that work, because it can be a pretty comprehensive effort given what we've been putting on for the last couple of years. With that, I will let you know that we have two of our Environmental Programs Committee members in person that like to make some comments and maybe even a recommendation at some point. But we've held a few debrief conversations and we discussed it at the last Environmental Programs Committee. And they did like an opportunity to share what their perspectives are with the council.
Okay.
Do we need to get some grass? Do we need to get some grass for?
We need the mower.
I guess the first thing is we really appreciate the support that we got from the council, the financial support, the intellectual, emotional, and physical support that we received. So, and thank you so much for staff for making it get pushed across the finish line. It was, it was a heavy lift. And just speaking for myself, I, I can say I thoroughly enjoyed being a part of it the last two years, learned a lot. And, and I feel really proud of all the lives that we touched, mostly positively. And I, I think that what we, my biggest takeaway is it's a, it's a large job and it's probably not well-suited for folks as ourselves who have other commitments and obligations. So I think I'll let Ken talk a little bit about his recommendation, but personally, I think handing it over to staff is a great idea because we can create a template based on the last several years. And I actually really like the idea of the Atherton-only event. I enjoyed doing a collaborative event, but the Atherton-only event had a lot of positives. And yeah, I would say you need to get start, started as soon as September. So those would be some initial recommendations.
Thanks, Amy. Let's see, this is my first Atherton, this is my first EPC Earth Day, which was Atherton-focused. The only one I did before was the one last year, which was over at MA. And quite frankly, I hadn't realized until this how much work it is for everybody. I mean, it was a major, major lift, and we should not lose fact of how much effort it took for the staff. The staff did a wonderful job, but man, did they have to put in time, particularly at the very end, every part of the town. At the same point in time, I don't know, when I was over there on the Earth Day, I didn't see anybody that wasn't smiling. I mean, I think everybody had a wonderful time. I think those who showed up had a great time. They learned a lot. I think, however, at the same point in time, it's time to rethink what is Earth Day in Atherton. And one, there's this massive lift that's required of the volunteers, staff, and even the council at times. I mean, Diana's put in more time than most people on this whole thing. It was amazing. The other thing is that the need for a kind of Earth Day education that this is Earth Day is kind of passe. I mean, it's not like that's a news item for anybody nowadays. I mean, it was ten years ago, but now the guys in grade school are telling you that, what you should be doing. So there's, the, the education has changed a lot. So the question I think the council has to ask is, what's the goal of next year's Earth Day? And then based on that, how do we do it? And from my point of view, I think it's an event that the town should run and let EPC get back to being the EPC. I joined the EPC because it was the Environmental Programs Group. What I wanna do is come up with programs that change the environmental footprint in the town. I don't wanna do it by law. I wanna do it by education and training and ideas. But we need to head in that direction. The party was great, but I'm not sure we really changed any of the earth, the footprint by it. So my goal now is to, as part of the EPC, go back to how do we get the education of the residents? How do we change how they do things, how they build homes, how they live their lives? Not demanding they do it, but educating them and giving the information to do it. So my recommendation, I think, is the same as Amy's, which is it's a great event. It really is more like the national hideout and those kinds of things which are run by the town. And it should be run by the town. Would be happy to have a booth there and work, but it's gotta be done by, by a different group. That, that's kind of my view.
Yeah, the only other thing I would add in terms of the Environmental Program Committee program. We would like to go back to our committee members in our July meeting and talk about what those programs could be and then bring them back to you all. And some of them might require funding. But, but to Ken's point, we're looking at educating the residents on steps that they can take at home to improve our environmental footprint and to uphold our climate action plan. So, so we would love to do, continue to do that. And we think that the event, which is a festival, is in good hands with staff.
Great. Can I take a moment to say thank you to both of you guys? Did an amazing, amazing job. You know, we can't say thanks enough. Ken was the one who came up with the lawnmower, the sheep versus the lawnmower.
She had a great time.
And, yeah.
They had a wonderful.
And we were able to herd them after all, after all of our meetings about how we were gonna get them back on the truck.
Today by figuring out how to get them in and out of the, get them out of the van. Because otherwise, we had visions of the sheep running everywhere.
Yeah.
Thank God they heard.
Yeah.
They're not that smart.
Thank you. And Amy, you did an amazing job on every facet, including finding new vendors and just amazing. Even Robert was, I have pictures of Robert moving tables, so we all, we all did a little bit of lifting.
Everyone's there, it's incredible.
Literally did lifting, so, so thank you all. Anyway, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So that concludes the staff presentation. Really, our goal is to get some guidance from council on your preferences in terms of what type of Earth Day you'd like to see moving forward next year. And the plan from the Environmental Programs Committee is to take some of that direction and then put together a work plan really early, probably at your September regular meeting to start the actual work of putting that event together.
So, so first off, I thought the EPC and Diana really put in a lot of extra work on the thing and, and made it the success that it was. You know, I've been to a number of Earth Days over my terms here. I thought that, you know, this one was a little bit different, but it still had a lot of the key things that, that are necessary. And, and they are, you know, bringing awareness to people who come to the meeting about different alternatives that they can use. So take into consideration the, the robot lawnmower. Most people didn't know there was a robot lawnmower. And they can go get one and, and they should possibly look into that as opposed to, you know, having, you know, other alternatives or cutting the grass by pushing it themselves. In the past, we've had movies that were provocative and opened up people's eyes to nuclear energy and other things. And I think that's really what the Earth Day should be. It should be something that opens up people's eyes and brings in new ideas for them. And I think that that's where I think the EPC should come in with, you know, trying to brainstorm what perhaps some of those things might be. And then staff could, could work on putting that together. I feel that it should be like you've suggested, Atherton-only. You know, other people can come. People from, from Felton Gables all came. And a lot of people from North Fair Oaks showed up as well, and I think that that was good. And so, but I'd like to have it not be like it was two years ago. That's my two cents. I think it just makes it a little bit more homely. I think that the, there were things that were there for the children to capture their imagination with regards to, you know, some of the things that were over by the pavilion. I'd hate to see those things go because you wanna capture their enthusiasm and their interest as well, right up front. And, and so I think that those, some of those things should be considered. So I thought it was a good, a good event. I understand what y'all are saying, and I agree with that. I think staff should be taking the lead, but, you know, unfortunately, we had some staff changes at that time. And so it put a little extra effort and a little burden on some of the people who were on the committee. And a couple of people that were on the council had to participate. In fact, all of us showed up to try and help in some manner, so. But I think that, you know, we, we're now fully staffed, and I think that the staff should be able to, to take control of it. But I think EPC should come up with the ideas that will help capture the imagination of the people here in Atherton. And hopefully, as, you know, as Ken said, find a way to move them forward to, to change their opinion on some things or think about, hey, I could do this versus do that, and it would actually be good for the environment. And so I think that I appreciate everything you did. And those are my two cents on this.
Anybody else? So I guess right now we're getting general comments, and then I would like to actually ask you each specifically the questions. So we get a meeting, we talked about which of the type of event would we prefer? So there's a series of different choices, but let's start first with what you, anything you wanna say that's general.
Okay, I will, I can go. Planning Earth Day is a huge amount of work, and I echo what everyone else says. You guys did a great job, and that includes the staff. I think the, right now, we have so many cooks in the kitchen, it gets extra complicated. So I think streamlining it and having the town commit to having an Earth Day festival every year that's organized by the staff is the right way to move forward. I think it would make it a lot easier for the staff if they are hosting, know that they're doing this every year, that gives them a whole year to plan it. It also means at the event, they could be saying, hey, Cal Water, this is the date for next year's event. Put it on your calendar, and it all gets a lot easier for everyone to execute this event if we know it's every year. It also means that people will start planning around it, because they'll know, Earth Day's a great time. I'm gonna make sure my grandkids are in town. They're gonna be visiting in April. I'm gonna make sure they're here. And so I think it'll get better. It'll be better attended if we have, and it's already an amazingly well-attended event. But I think establishing it as an annual thing both makes the work less. It spreads it out. It makes it easier because it becomes more routine. And also, it will help make the event better, because we'll be better every year at doing it instead of rethinking what we're doing every year. I think, like we've said, I prefer it as an Atherton-only event. I think the regional event last year was a, or two years ago, was really informative, really interesting, but it wasn't as much of a community event as it was this year. It was fun. You know, the nice thing about having it at Holbrook Palmer Park, there's green space, people hang out, people stay, people meet their neighbors. I think it serves as a environmental education, but also as a community-building event, which the town, there's a lot of interest by residents in having. So I think it's a beautiful event that we should continue. I would suggest that we, this year, we increase the budget to fifteen thousand dollars. And I would say we should keep it at fifteen thousand dollars. I think having the staff trying to, you know, conserve money and worry about tables and stuff like, that's, that's silly, and we should save some of the money for the EPC to come up with what the special sauce is for the event every year. I mean, Ken came up with this awesome sheep versus robot thing. That's what makes our event so amazing. Like, we have a lot of the same vendors that other Earth Day festivals have, but what we, no one else has sheep versus robots. Nobody else has leaf blower bowling. Like, that's kind of the silliness, the fun, the unique Atherton spin to it is something that I think, if the EPC is more focused on the special sauce and the staff is more focused on, you know, the skele, you know, the foundation of this event, that's a really clear division of labor, and I. And I think that is more fun for EPC, more inspiring for EPC. It also simplifies things for the staff. And I think having that extra money to have those fun, cool ideas and also make staff not have to be nickel and diming our way through what is a very large event would be the best way to do it. And I look, I think having the EPC come back to us with other ideas that they want to do now that Earth Day doesn't suck up all the oxygen out of the room for their committee, I think will be really interesting. And I'm excited to see what this extra bandwidth opens up for them creatively for our committee. So.
Can I ask you a question? When you said you want to include the 15,000, 15,000, but that's for Earth Day.
Yeah.
Um, I heard the EPC people saying they may want to add other things that may need budget as well. So in that case, would that, would they be coming back to council to ask for budgets on top of this?
Like, for example, Ken this year came in front of us about the gardener education program. And we, as a one-off, approved it.
Okay.
I think that makes sense. I think having in our budget, the goal is to have our annual expenses in the budget. And we would be saying today, potentially, the Earth Day Festival is an annual thing versus if the EPC has new ideas that they want to come pitch to us, I think that's a great thing and we should be encouraging them to come forward with their other ideas if they have big, cool things that they want us to do.
So I mean, part of the EPC's role is written into its charter. It's the Climate Action Plan. So as the EPC focuses more on what that is, they're going to come up with ways to educate the community and continue to engage the community. Those aren't budgeted items, but they're policy items. So they come to the council as the ideas come up and have to be approved by the council. They can be budget amendments or they could be incorporated into our current education and advertising efforts already. It just depends on what the items are.
Well, um, see, I'm glad you brought that up about the Climate Action Plan because that's kind of like the EPC's Bible, right? That's kind of why EPC exists, is to create, update and, uh, perform on the Climate Action Plan. And there's a lot of help that comes with that from San Mateo County, the Sustainable San Mateo County Services. Um, I'm curious, um, do you know off the top of your head, um, how many Earth Days were missed over the last uh, 10, 15 years? Uh, have, besides the COVID ones.
Who would want to shut down that? Remember that one?
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Yeah. So it seems like, you know, the, the people in the room, uh, have short-term memories, not short-term in that they don't remember a lot, but they weren't here when EPC was doing Earth Days from 2006, 2007, 2008, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, on, on. And it was done by really a very small handful of people and staff was pretty much never involved. And for a long time, we really didn't have a budget at all, you know, for it. So it has grown, uh, because, uh, the first one that I ever went to in 2006, we were, um, you know, at the, um, the park, the, the pavilion, the house. And, uh, it was mostly, uh, grade school kids do, bringing projects and, and things from that their teachers helped them do. It was the, the, the very beginning of Earth Day events. So it has grown. It's really grown exponentially. And the events that have been put on the last couple of years, um, uh, well, I guess three times. One, uh, that we did, and then the MA one and this one, right, since COVID. I mean, they've been really big. I agree with everybody that we shouldn't do a, um, a, a regional wide, uh, Earth Day for Atherton. It's much more, um, friendly, uh, down home. You get people from Atherton really wanting to come here. And the one that was at MA, I got lots of negative comments about it just being too big. And, you know, the, the residents went over there and they walked around. They couldn't find anything. They couldn't find a place to park, stuff like that. Parking's a problem. Anyway, I agree with all of that. I just, um, if I could, um, say that I think what really is important, and yes, the students these days, they are amazing and they know about Earth Day. They know about conservation. They know about environmental, uh, climate change and they're, you know, um, they're passionate about it. Get those kids involved more instead of just a vendor here, a vendor there, you know, an electric car manufacturer. To me, that's a little too commercial. It's not down home enough. I'd like to see it more, uh, hands-on with, uh, the students. We have seven, 8,000 students that come into Atherton every day, school is in session. And, uh, they take part of Atherton. They should feel responsible for Atherton's wellbeing. And if, you know, that's what I'd like to see, more outreach. And that takes a lot of planning to get the teachers involved. So we need to do a sales job with the teachers so that they can, you know, earlier, early on enough so that they can plan the projects for them. So, um, I don't want us to forget the beginnings of the Environmental Programs Committee and Earth Day and every day. And then we, you know, got a hiccup in, uh, the COVID thing. And then it came back and it was a new generation or new, you know, a new way of doing things, which I think, uh, really transformed it. So.
Can I make one comment on the, the youth component that you touched on? I totally agree with you and I think this year, having been really active with it, we had, we had a youth-led fashion show. We had a youth-led clothing exchange. We had three different youth booths that were 100% operated by teens essentially, including Fiona Lempres, um, another youth group that was doing some educational information booth, the Surf Rider Foundation, which was youth-led. And then we had the Boy Scout Troop doing a service project.
I really, you know.
And the, and, and the student art show.
I understand that and I, I applaud you, but I think it kind of got, they kind of got overshadowed by all the other vendors and people, you know, selling things and the commercialization of it. And what is, well, I just had an experience and I was going to report out on this, this, uh, the music group from, uh, MA that you couldn't go to and that I did. I mean, these kids in their organizational skills are amazing these days. They're so mature and they're so competent. And, uh, you know, to get them involved and maybe they can do another student project, a competition, and maybe some of our funds can go as rewards to them, especially the seniors because they're going to be graduating and they need, you know, $500 or something in their pocket and something to strive for, which we did one time, right? And it was really a good thing and we got the kids to come out and do that. So if we're going to be throwing money around and, you know, you know.
I don't think we should be doing that.
Throwing money around?
Yeah.
No, but I mean, we're asking for a $15,000, uh, budget. We've never had anything like that. So.
I'm sure we need 15,000.
Well, I mean, you know, you were going like this a minute ago, but anyway, so.
So I heard, I heard consensus that it sounded like everyone agreed that it should be Atherton-centric and not the regional or with the multi-city. I think I heard consensus there. Um, there was a suggestion by Stacy that this be an annual event. So let's discuss that specific point. Do we want this?
It's always been an annual event.
Yeah, I think it should be an annual event. It should be an annual event.
I think consensus on that.
It is an annual event. I think right now, Earth Day has to come in front of the city council to get approval is how it's set up now. And I think that slows it down. So I would say we should not have that part of it. Maybe the creative side of it, but like if we say the festival's happening, come to us with your clue, your big ideas that are layered on top of this existing event might be a better way.
I just want to, I just want to respond to that. Okay. Because any program, any that you do have to come to council for approval. When, if you're going to show a movie, you got to give us a list of movies that you're planning on, uh, approval. You can't, you.
That's purely council policy though. I mean, we don't.
I know, but we, but, okay, in, in the past, uh, city manager, it was very hard to get a move of some significance approved by council. And so that has got to continue, I think, because you don't want, um, things going off the rails.
I agree. And that's why we did it that way.
So let's get more.
But I don't think it was a, I don't think it was a problem, you know, they gave us the list and we watched the movies. Most people watch the movies. And then we, we picked the movies that we, that were shown, uh, that, uh, were recommended. Were excellent, actually.
I thi- I think part of the, the challenge that, uh, that's member Holland articulated is if the entirety of the event and everything specific about it has got to come to the council to get its budget approved, we can't commit to anything until we get that budget approved. So we're planning, but putting everybody on hold until it comes to the council and then getting it approved. And then we can go back. And by then some of them will commit it to other events or activities and we lose them. So part of it of saying it's an annual event, it's going to happen. We can do all kinds of things, but what does the council want to see? Specific for approval? Is it just the movies? Or is it something beyond that? Or that's, that's what we, that's what I'm trying to get away from.
So I think that deserves a little study session and not just something that you're asking us to decide off the cuff right here and now. That is not a fair ask.
Well, um, what, what I'm asking is basically what process can we free Earth Day from so that it can continue as an annual event and be successful in that way? And what does the council as a policy board want to see?
Yeah. So for example, you can bifurcate the money so we can agree to a budget tonight.
Yeah.
So we know here's the budget. So now we're not waiting for the budget.
Right.
And then the question then, so if we separate that one, that one's easy. Now we get to what level of input do we have to have on what gets done?
I think that we could kind of give, you know, a set of three to five criteria, right? You know, that you'd want to see. And the budget is one, and that's why I pushed for an increased budget this last time, which would, you know, help you guys to do. And, um, but, you know, general kind of areas that you would want to see, I guess categories in the event, right? So that it's just not a free-for-all and maybe, but not specific. I mean, if you want to have movies of significance that are showing cutting-edge things and cutting-edge technology, like the little robot, um, lawnmower. Several years ago, that didn't exist.
Yeah.
You know, so maybe that category would be cutting-edge, you know, technology.
So do you, would that take the form, like the EPC had said that, that in September, they'd like to do a presentation of some potential ideas. So is the idea that we can approve the budget today? And then sometime in September, they'll come back and say, here are our choices. And then we can have a discussion of it. Is that how you'd like to see it roll out?
Well, I think that that is one way of doing it, rather than, I mean, I feel very uncomfortable, um, you know, uh, deciding on the spot because I don't think that that was.
There's some information here. Yeah.
It was in the staff report. Did I miss that?
Well, we're not looking, we're not looking for detail. All, what, what we're looking for is what are the options?
Uh, personally, I'd like, I'd like to see that there's some discussion with the EPC, with staff. There's some things they're going to go do and then staff comes back with a budget. I, I, I'm not in favor of approving a budget now and then we're going to figure out how to spend it all. I, I think that that's inappropriate.
Oh, I, I think.
Well, that's what I'm giving you my two cents. I'm allowed to miss my, give you my two cents.
All right. Well, we can vote on that then.
Well, let me say the timing is a big point here. So one thing we've learned in multiple years of doing this is that we need to start early. And historically, what's happened is that we went in front of, we had to wait for approval. We went in front of the, of, of the council in like January sometimes, which means we don't know what we're doing. In the meantime, everybody else has started January 1st, if not before. So it's way too late in this last year for a number of reasons, because of the staff stuff, we sort of way too late so that we, you know, scrambled to even get food vendors and stuff. So one thing that definitely clearly has to happen is that the decisions have to be pushed earlier on our schedule. So if we're going to have a role in voting on what gets actually done, and that's, you know, something we can decide here. But I would argue that it has to happen way earlier. So.
It's really up to the EPC and the chair of the EPC. Exactly. Yeah.
But no, I, sorry. I think if we're asking staff to run it, then that's different from having EPC pitch a wholly new idea every year. So if we're, it seems like the consensus right now is that staff should be running this event. I think we could give some guardrails to them of what that foundation looks like. And then I hear you that we don't want to get wildly, you know, have carte blanche for creative stuff. But like if we are, if the goal is to keep doing the Atherton Earth Day Festival, like we did it two years ago, like we did it this year, a lot of it becomes routine and it becomes more time efficient and financially efficient if we know that we're doing that with plenty of time.
I think to Council Member Lewis's point, I think staff can commit to bringing anything we intend to showcase, like a video or a speaker series or something that's outside of the exhibitor, vendor component or outside of the beetle lady and library component, we can commit to bringing that either put it on our departmental reports for council to review and discuss. Um, or putting together a small presentation on the agenda. I don't think that's difficult. If we do have an approved budget and we know that it's an annual event that we're going to be moving forward with, we can still plan to connect with those vendors early on enough and commit to doing whatever work with them, connect with the food vendors. We're not going to have to spend any of that money until 2025 anyway. So if we have that pocket of money to work with, we can commit to working with those vendors and those exhibitors where there may be an expense or plan for the chair and rentals and the tent rentals without actually spending the money. Um, and then that budget can be a part of what we bring back to council. But we, I think the challenge is if we have a new idea or a new, um, activity come up in November, it, it does make it difficult to then have to bring that back to council before we can move forward with that new opportunity.
May I make a comment? So I think if we intend to make this a cookie cutter event and just duplicate it year after year, the way we did it last year, you know, and just roll it out. I think that's a cop-out. I just, I just think that people will get tired of it because people go to events like that all the time. And so what makes ours unique? Our leaf blower competition between council and the police because that's pretty kind of cool. But you know, yeah, so I, I just, I think it has to be more Atherton-centric and not so commercialized. That's my personal opinion. But, you know, I'm only one of four right now.
One of the things we heard today, and I just want to reiterate it, is that with this commitment that the staff's running the nuts and bolts of the event, it leaves the EPC to add every year a creative thing. So maybe there's more than one. So we have the one that involves the council involvement, which the last two times has been the leaf blower. We don't know, we're probably not going to do that again. So there, there's that bucket of things. Then we have the showcase thing, which this year was the, the sheep ver- versus the lawnmower. And then we also had a very big art exhibit. So next, the only thing we're saying is the anchor stuff. I mean, well, maybe we're not saying, maybe we should say, what are the anchor things? The cookie cutter, are the vendors and the food and the parking and some of that? So that part is cookie cutter, but everything else we do around it is unique. And the EPC is saying, get the, get the food off our backs so that we, we can come up with the next creative piece on top. So it's kind of defining the roles a little bit. So I know historically the staff is supposed to run this, but I'll say something controversial since I've been here, that's not been the case. But, um, the, so, but that's going to be a big change.
I think you forgot that backwards. Historically, it hasn't been staff running.
But this is what we're.
No, but historically.
Has not been staff.
Has not.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, but that's not what you said.
Did I say it backwards?
She, you guys are saying the same thing.
So I didn't understand why the art exhibit was tied to environmental purposes. I mean, there were a lot of landscapes.
No, it, there, well, then you got to look a little closer because there was an actual competition that went across to all the middle schools and high schools in Atherton. And it was asking for, uh, art-themed. And there is one teacher every year who does a, what's, what was the theme of it? It was something about the, the earth. And each of the students had to do something about environmental message. So there were 16.
Oh, it was a student art exhibit. But there were other art things for sale that were commercial art.
Those, but those were all famous artists. Well, at least one of them was famous. Artists that were doing stuff, they consider themselves environmental artists. But the biggest part around the whole center was all student artwork and it was all environmentally themed. And we gave out awards. We gave out awards in, um, you know, by age category. So we had, you know, the younger kids. So we did give out awards. They were very much.
I must have missed that, that just kind of went over my head.
So, and those people were brought to the stage and given an award. So that was all environmentally based. And it's an ongoing thing because that one teacher has done it now twice in a row. So that is part of it. Now, the question is, do we do that again? I mean, what parts do we continue and what parts are new?
Yeah, so looking at the agenda again, it says review, receive the report and provide any comments. And I think the comments that we are providing is that we want staff, we want to have our own one. And we need to look at the budget as well as some items that would be in there. And, and as was mentioned earlier by the vice mayor, is perhaps that is a study session sometime in early September where we can then go ahead and have the whole group here and then make an informed decision. Because we're not supposed to be taking any action according to item number 15 in staff report.
Okay. I do think that it's good for us to give some sort of direction. And there was one other question.
Supposed to give direction at the next meeting. It says, receive and file. It's already filed as far as I'm concerned.
Five comments.
If we give our in future events, if we discuss what some broader, we don't have to make a decision tonight. But if we, if we, if they, if the EPC hears what our guidance is, when they come back in September, they're going to have something for us. If we don't give them any guidance. So there was a question, one other question, so, which was, should there be an event planner hired? And so that was another question that was brought up. So I don't know if you guys don't want to discuss any of that, and we're just gonna, okay.
I think, I think we have some good direction that we can go back with. Well, we certainly have direction, but your September meetings are packed. And so if you want to have another study session just on Earth Day, that's fine. We can schedule an additional meeting for that. But my take on what I heard from the Earth Day Committee up here was they loved Earth Day, it was wonderful and it was a lot of work. And they prefer that staff take the lead and manage the event and they provide the creativity around the event. So it's not just taking food off their plate, it's taking the bulk of the logistics of the event. The vendors, the organization, setting up tables, chairs, all that sort of stuff.
Volunteer management.
The volunteer stuff. And they provide the creativity to the event.
Right.
What's the special theme for the event? Is it sea level rise? Is it, you know, air quality? And what can we do to make it very Atherton focused around that particular issue? How creative can we be? So if the council says to staff, you've got a $15,000 budget, this event is going to happen every year. July 1, we've got staff to start planning those milestones along the year to make that event happen. Making the commitments with vendors, making the commitment with purchases, putting together a plan. All of that's not going to happen by September. That's going to happen throughout the year. But the Earth Day folks can certainly have a meeting or two over the next couple of months and try and gel up a creative theme for the event. That'll help put some framework to it. But, but I think that's what we're kind of hearing and asking for the council's support for.
And I think everybody said that, that they agreed to that.
What I'm, what I'm hearing though is you're asking for a specific plan to talk about in September.
As you guys are looking at what, what they're asking you to do and, and you're trying to implement the things that we've talked about here, you may come back and say, it's going to cost $20,000. You might, you might not. You might say we can do it for 10. I don't know. But I'm not, I'm not willing to commit it to, tell you, hey, go find a way to spend $15,000 tonight. I'm not.
And I heard, I heard that.
By the way, we're under budget on the extra money this year, just so you know. We didn't spend it all just because we had it, just so you know.
And we're not asking you to set a budget this evening, just to consider that we budget an amount.
We'll be a budget.
Yeah. Planning for it, and planning for the activities. But what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing anyway, and that's the direction I'm hoping to clear up, is in September, what do you want? Do you, do you want a full blown plan about what Earth Day is going to be for the next year? Because you're not going to have that in September. Do you want us to just do a budget amendment item and you can talk about ideas? Or you can talk, have the Earth Committee tasked with coming up with some theme and you're going to talk about that in September? What do you want in September?
I think that they need to come up with their ideas on what they think we should focus on with regards to our climate action plan and other emerging issues. I think that that's what they would like to go do too.
Okay. Is that consistent for everyone?
Yeah.
What I said.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's not more details that we're expecting.
So then that then gives you guys the ability to reach out to, so I think, I hear you that it's too commercial. But I think we are different on city council that we know what cow water does, we know what green waste does. Not everyone knows all these free services that are available to our residents. And a lot of our vendor fare are, it's the mosquito and vector control people, it's the library. Like, these are free things that people should be knowing about that are free resources to them. Most Afra residents don't even know what PCE is. We all know very deeply who PCE is. So I think those are the types of the vendors that it gets really easy for the staff. If they know they can book all those people now, that makes it very easy for them. And I think it's a really valuable resource to our residents to be able to learn about these free things that are available to them. So maybe there's a difference between staff getting all of the, our partners locked in versus the like more commercial elements could be a separate discussion or there's a wholly difference discussion around that is a different. But like, I think getting all of these partners getting on their calendars early makes life much easier for everybody, including our partners.
Agree. Most people don't know all the things that are in the bill inserts.
Very true.
Okay, but when they see the booth and they see that stuff there, then they say, oh, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
And home resiliency and all sorts of things are, are good topics for the community to learn about at Earth Day.
Good idea.
So in September, the EPC is going to come back with some thoughts about high level ideas for a theme or a special sauce for the event. But staff will begin July 1 lining up things because it's going to be an annual event. Right now, our 24, 25 budget includes $5,000, just like prior years, Earth Day. So at some point over the next few months, we'll come back with a request for a budget amendment to at least bring it up to 10, maybe to 15, but that's pleasure of the council.
Even though they gave them additional five last.
Last year he did, but this next year it's only five.
Okay, all right.
Is that?
Oh, next year's a little bit, unless we ask for the more.
All right.
Well, unless we.
Do we agree for the 10 and then at least have the 10 and they can ask for additional if they need? Because we already.
Well, it's, it's, I guess not them asking for it, it's staff running the event. If they've got special.
Come back and tell us how much they need.
They need 10.
Yeah.
It's cost 10, it costs 10 in 2022. It costs just under 15 this year.
I give them 10.
We, we spent around nine, around 9,000 this year.
I think having 10 to do the operations and then maybe that, you know, I was saying 15 to have five for the EPC to have the special part. So that's the discussion that we should be have of what the special part can be that.
So there's consent.
Budget, but I think.
On 10.
You know, getting the.
I'm okay with 10.
Whatever, it was 10.
Okay, we'll come back with a budget amendment for the five to augment the budget you already approved.
All right.
Excellent. Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Now we're going back.
Let's go back. So we're now on item 12. Consideration of appointments of various town committees and planning commissions. And it's you, Anthony, you're up.
It's me. So thank you, council. As you know, annually, we have terms that expire at the end of June. This was a part of an amendment to our committee and commission's governing resolution a few years back to shift how those terms would expire so that we didn't have to replace a lot of members each year. And so this year we had several committees that had expirations, includes the audit and finance committee, the environmental programs committee. There were two seats on the park and rec committee, one is a regular seat, one is a foundation seat for two years. And there were, there's three openings on the transportation, bicycle, pedestrian, and safety committee. And then there was one opening on the planning commission to fill a four year term. So fortunately, we had an incumbent reapply for audit and finance. We had an incumbent reapply for the environmental programs committee. Both of those, Kate Skolnick, who I know is here to speak, either in person or I saw her join online. And then we obviously have Amy Farrell from the environmental programs committee. We had two incumbents from the transportation, bicycle, and pedestrian committee apply. That's David Jones and Tom Owens. And then we had, the new applicants would be Dorothy Hunter, who applied for the park and rec committee and Annie Blazer, who applied for the planning commission. And then the foundation seat was Frank Merrill for the park and rec committee, who's also an incumbent. So as George suggested, we can consider an appointment to all of the committees where we have incumbents and one motion if you're open to it. And the areas that you might want to have a little more deliberation and conversation on would be the transportation, bicycle, and pedestrian committee because we do have one spot open that we might consider reducing the membership down from the current seven down to something like six or five. And we have a, an incumbent on the planning commission who's termed out and we have a new applicant, but council may consider something else there. And with that, I conclude my report. And it looked like Councilmember Whitmer has a comment.
So I know we have this towards the end, but first off, on the planning commission, we have one person that's termed out. And of course, our.
Questions?
No, I'm making a comment.
Yeah.
Making a comment before we appoint people, which is very pertinent to my comment. So the planning commission position, I believe we should reconsider, this is just my two cents. Appointing, reappointing the person who's termed out for a term of one year because that person has been involved in the housing element so far and bringing somebody in new might be problematic. And, you know, exposing them right next month to something that they haven't been a party to. Also, when we looked at the transportation committee a year, a year and a half ago, we said that we would reduce it to five. And I think that we should consider doing that. And that, that way we don't have to really appoint anybody at this point in time. But those are my two cents. I think the most important one is the planning commission. I'd like y'all's consideration on that because I think, you know, we're at a critical juncture right now. And we can go ahead and modify that to just be a one year appointment. Because that person is actually termed out. But anyway, I just wanted to get those things on the table.
I want to return us to questions. And actually, what you said did trigger my question, which is if the person is termed out, are we allowed to reappoint them? Do we have the right to do that if they've turned out? Is that's kind of go, isn't that a rule or how does that work?
It's within the committee resolution about the two year hiatus after two consecutive terms. But appointments are entirely within the pleasure and control of the council. So if you choose to appoint or reappoint someone who has termed out, you've done so numerous times in the past with Bob Polito, Eric Lane, et cetera. The, the difference in this case is you have an applicant for that position, but you do have the options.
Not here. Do we have the freedom to add a person? Because you, you hate to have a person who's really interested.
You do not have the freedom to add a position to the planning commission, to a committee. You can modify the resolution and change its size.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Before we get too in the weeds on the more contentious committees, I think Anthony had suggested we do a quick vote on the EPC and parks and rec. Because there were audit, EPC, parks, and get those official before we start.
Okay.
Getting in the weeds. So I'll make the motion. Do we have to make?
Before you vote on that, we should take public comments.
Oh, yeah.
In case somebody has something to say on any of those.
Thank you. Anybody else has any questions?
Yeah, are we, are there any more questions? Because we were actually on questions.
And, and just as an FYI, you do have Kate Skolnick on the line, Dorothy Hunter's on the line, and then Tom.
I just want to say, the reason Tom left, he thought that we had already done this item. He didn't realize that we pushed it back in front of item 15 and he came and he just left. He thought that we had.
Is that correct? You got a fire call, yeah.
So that's not the reason.
Yeah, okay. But.
Logically speaking.
So do we have any public comment? Do any of the people online that are up for, want to say anything?
Applicants if we want, if we want.
Yeah, does anybody want to say anything that's applied that, that came tonight?
I'll just give in order of, I'll go Kate Skolnick, since she's on audit and finance. Kate, you have the floor if you'd like to speak to any, your interest in serving.
I just wanted to say thank you to the council. I've enjoyed serving my first term and I look forward to serving again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. And we have Dorothy Hunter also on the line. Dorothy, you have the floor. I can come back to her. And the, the only other person that I see is Andy Blazer, but you may want to reserve that for when you have that conversation. And then Amy, of course, sorry, Amy.
So shall we do what?
Audit and finance and.
Pull out the ones that are.
EPC and park and rec.
Yep. Yeah, I can make the motion. We, we appoint the three applicants to the three committees with the incumbents, the EPC, Parks and Rec, and Audit and Finance.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It makes sense.
Okay.
Get the easy ones done and walk out of the way.
So, do you want to talk about the other two separately?
Yeah, let's start with planning.
All right. So do you, should we go back to questions or are we at comments now?
I made my comment.
I know you went out of order.
So what?
You'd be in trouble.
It is important to get on the table. Before we vote it.
So anybody else? Let Andy, if we're doing planning commission, right? He's online.
Andy Blazer.
He is online.
He should make a comment. I have a.
Mr. Blazer, you have the floor if you'd like to make a comment about your interest in serving on the planning commission.
Well, thank you, council. Yeah, I just thought I was unmuted. I completely understand your reservation and wanting to maybe keep somebody involved with a complex situation. I have a background in architecture and civil planning on the mostly residential side, but I'm also well versed in commercial. And I know the town's got a lot of, you know, hot button issues to address and a lot of state things that need to be implemented. And anyways, I'm here to serve the, the town and I'm very interested in that. So.
Have a question for him. This is Elizabeth Lewis. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions to you. On your application, you say you bring a unique perspective as someone who's previously built estates and gone through the process on the other side. Meaning that, could you just elaborate on that a little bit, please?
Uh, yeah, I've been on the other side of the table where I've gone through all the civil planning for estates now. All the setbacks and all the, all the water control issues. So I, I have a kind of deep understanding of, of what it is. And I'm, I'm interested to bring that.
Was that in Atherton? Was that in Atherton?
Yes.
Okay. And have you been keeping up with the housing element process?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Stacy.
I'm finished.
Okay. I, can I ask a quick, quick question? Have you been to any of the planning commission meetings this year while they've been discussing all the myriad sequin ordinances that are percolating up?
I, I have not, no.
Thanks. Thanks.
Well, good.
It's a hard one for me. I'll make a comment is that if someone's willing to step up and actually do this, I want to encourage them. But I totally get the wisdom of saying we're in the midst of one of the most complicated things we've had to do. And switching horses in the middle of the most complicated thing is uh problematic. So I see, I see the merit of what Bill is saying. On the other hand, I'm just thrilled that we have volunteers and he's obviously very qualified and can bring a new voice, so. Um, and I was sad to hear that you can't have both because I would add one more if I could, but I don't know.
So it um just make, I make a comment about um all of these um meetings are publicly noticed and publicly held and um coming to the meetings and voicing your opinions are welcomed. Uh, you know, as the Planning Commission deliberates and scratches their heads over this. And also um at the council meetings, have, have you come to any of the council meetings to kind of uh help us try to figure out our situations here? Regarding housing. There's lots of other difficult situations.
That's a question to the applicant.
Yes, question to the applicant.
I heard you say no.
Uh, I I've read, read about what you're dealing with, yes. And I have not attended the actual meetings. Um, but um I've, I've just read and I understand um the complexities that go into those decisions. Um, I think that, you know, each, each specific condition like obviously has a lot of education that I would have to catch up on. Um, but I would be very willing to dive deep into that and use the resource of ChatGPT as well. Which is really helpful. So, thank you, guys.
I don't know. That's a little generic for my taste. I.
I'd like to make a motion if we could. I'd like to make a motion that we extend the current candidate in the Planning Commission who's termed out for a period of one year to keep the housing element moving. And and then reconsider this applicant uh twelve months from now. Because I would not want to see anything happen with where we are. Planning Commission's meeting the end of this month. They're meeting again on the on the, on the key items for our housing element uh uh next month. And also again in August. It's not really time for learning. It's time for people who participated in those meetings and and then we have to make a decision and move forward. Um, we have to get this housing element done. Um, we're already getting letters from uh interested parties and I I just I think bringing somebody new with all due respect uh to your, your background, which is very impressive. Um, I think it's, it's knowledge about what we've done today and the decisions we've made based on the meetings that we've had and the meetings that people participated in. So I'd like to go forward with my recommendation.
Understand. Uh, I'd like to make a comment on your recommendation. Um, and maybe, I'm not sure it's an amendment, but um I think your hypothesis uh that um adding someone new to the committee um is going to be detrimental to the process could be very positive to the process. We don't know. Um, and the committee is a committee of, you know, uh four or five other people, so there's um you know, it's not just one person. Um, I, and I'm just, I just, I think your rationale is, does not make um does not move me to uh agree with you.
Well, then don't vote for it. I've made my point and I've, I've said why. And I don't want to see anything with the housing element changed.
I, I don't think any of us want to see the housing element be jeopardized at all.
Vice Mayor, that's, that's my opinion. Okay, it doesn't reflect on the, the quality of the candidate.
Right.
It's my opinion and I'd prefer not to have any wrinkles in the, in the soaps. That's why I have gone ahead and made, made a uh proposal. And if there's a second, we can vote on it. Uh, but that's my two cents. If there's not a second, then you all go forward and I'll vote against it anyway.
Second it or what's your thought? Where are you on this? Um. I I agree with you Diana and you Bill that it's and your, your application is is excellent and you have really good. It, it seems very relevant experience. I'm worried that I'm worried you don't know what you're, what you're getting yourself into here. Because we're about to go through the SEQA analysis to get our housing element through, which I'm told is about three thousand pages. So um and on top of it, all the myriad ordinances associated with the housing element to get this thing through the door so we can submit something. And I'm I'm not, I, 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 I wish you had seen some of these meetings and knew what you were getting into. So um, I'm um I'm, I'm going back and forth because I think having new fresh voices is excellent and you have relevant experience that would be useful. Um, but I also think Bill's correct that there, it's a huge amount of work that's coming in front of the Planning Commission this year and having someone that isn't learning as someone who's new on the council, there's so much learning around this planning code stuff, so um, I'm going back and forth on on whether or not weighing a new voice against someone who's been through the trenches and make, I, I'm going back and forth on it, so.
Um, can I possibly ask a question if we were, would you be, if we decided tonight to try to entertain your application for next year? Is that something you would be willing to come forward for next year?
Are you still on?
He's. I, I mean, eh, that, eh, that's difficult to say, you know?
Yeah.
Um.
Of course.
I mean, I think the only thing I, I mean, I don't, I'm not really trying to defend myself because I understand your, your problem. Um, i- it's just, you know, from my perspective, I've been in highly complex situation and I feel like I have the aptitude to read through it all and understand it. And like you're saying, bring a new perspective to it. I definitely am not in, in trying to make things more complex. I would be trying to help streamline the press, process for the town. And that would be my goal is to uh to put forth the, the group vision, so.
We don't have a second.
She hadn't cast a poll.
I haven't, yeah, anyone can second. It's not just me.
Um, I, I was actually thinking of abstaining because I can't decide.
Okay.
Quite honestly, so. If I abstained, that would leave only you. That's why I was looking at you. Um, yeah, I was wussing out, totally wussing out.
Yeah, I wish Nancy had come um to speak on her interest in seeing this three, thing through.
Yeah, we're assuming she wants to.
No, I, I spoke to her and she said she happily.
Yeah, she filed an application, so.
Oh, she did.
Right? No.
Our process is typically with incumbents. We check in if they're interested in continuing to serve.
Said she would be willing to be on it.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, Andy, I was on the Environmental Programs Committee beforehand and I did not go to an EPC meeting before I signed up blindly, so I don't know that, it's just Planning Commission is a little bit of a different beast, but you have planning committee experience.
It's not like he couldn't read all of the stuff and, you know, there is a committee of five and you talk and you kind of listen and you're rational and you understand what's going. I mean, it's not the hypothesis is that it will submarine or um sidetrack the planning process. Eric Lane is a very strong leader and um, you know, so. I, I, anyway, that's, that's how I feel.
Let's go ahead and decide how everybody feels so we can move on.
Can I ask a question of the veterans on the uh, the council about why term limits were put in? Was it just so that we can rotate?
Exactly.
Feelings through?
Yeah.
And all we're doing is extending for one year.
Does anyone want to make a motion that we go with the new candidate?
So I, I, I think you should, mayor should say his motion has failed and.
Yes, his motion has failed. We did, we failed to get a second on that motion.
Haven't voted.
She hasn't voted.
Hasn't voted yet.
Yeah, yeah, don't rush it.
It's just all on me, so. I think I say let's throw some fresh blood at this, I guess. I mean, I think um it'd be interesting, you know, Andy's got experience and let's see. No, um.
No, that was not a second, so the mayor's going to declare.
Yes, so the first motion failed. It did fail to get a second, so uh I'm opening the floor to any other motions. Does anybody else have another motion?
Why don't you make the motion there?
Because she said she wants to abstain.
Same, yeah.
Well, I'll make the motion that um we um let um Kate no, what's her name? Sorry. Nancy Lerner, I'm sorry, I was getting her mixed up with Kate. Nancy Lerner um have a little retirement um from the Planning Commission because her term is up and that we um accept Andy Blazer as uh the new Planning Commissioner.
Okay, I'll second it. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
Okay, motion passes.
Motion passes.
Andy, we're counting on you. Bring it home.
Yep.
Bicycle pedestrian?
Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone.
Welcome to the Planning Commission. Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, you may be sorry.
Bicycle pedestrian and committee.
Oh, that's right. There was still one more. And this, this one involved a question of whether we should.
Yeah, this one you have uh seven positions, one of which is vacant. You have two incumbent applicants. Uh, but the council's prior uh directive was to try and through attrition, reduce the size of that committee from seven down to five. So you could appoint the two and leave and still recruit for the other one. You could appoint the two and drop the membership down to six. Or you could appoint just one of the incumbents and drop the membership down to five.
I don't think we have attrition when two of our incumbents want to continue serving.
But you still have a vacancy, so you could actually move to remove the vacant.
And I think having six members is problematic.
It can be.
And I think that we should continue to recruit for a seventh member because it is a combined committee structure. It's not just one committee. And uh work, work towards that. And I'm sorry that Tom got called away on a fire.
We said that we were going to reduce the number down when it was appropriate. And so there is one person who's not, not applied, so we might as well go down to six. I don't think that that would be a problem.
It could be, but it's.
I have a question. How often historically have we had a committee of six before and has it been a problem?
Isn't the rail committee six?
Because it, we're talking about high votes.
It was a lot.
The problem's tie votes, right?
The, the, well, there's two problems. The issue is tie, tie votes, but one of the challenges with the Transportation Committee has also been getting to the quorum
Right.
uh of members. And with six, you still have a membership quorum of four required, just like when you were seven.
Four or more. That's good. Four or more. Maybe, maybe we could say that if you don't show up for X number of meetings, then you are off.
Well, our resolution does.
Say that already.
I don't know that we.
It's in our plan.
It doesn't happen often, but it has happened in this calendar year.
We've had a lot of quorum issues with this committee this year.
I know. Well, it's been, you know, I used to be on it and it was really hard even to schedule with staff. Okay, so for like the whole last year, we really didn't ever have a meeting. But it was kind of coming off of, you know, whatever and whatever, but
Yeah.
And it was really because of staff, not uh uh the volunteers.
I think uh can I do?
Yeah.
I think Elizabeth's point's right that this is an attrition. This is two people applying and they're people who participate actively in the committee and so I, and they're both from you know, the two separate committees. One was from transportation, one was bike pet. And so I
Yeah.
I think keep it, you know.
But there's one spot still open.
And there's one spot still open, so I think, you know, for now, we should try keeping it to seven and hope we have a new member and hope we don't have more quorum problems for the rest of the year. Um, but I think if we continue to have quorum problems, then we should reevaluate the size of the committee and.
Dissolve the committees altogether. You don't act right.
You know, both of these people are um very active. And I don't think they've been part of our quorum problems, so um I think they, yeah, we should apply, appoint both of them.
And you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the emotion that we're appointing both of them and continuing to recruit at a seven member.
I'll second. Okay, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Did you say no?
Yeah, I did say no.
Okay.
Three to one, yeah.
Likes to be abstract.
Still passes.
Mm-hmm.
I'm curious if you know, okay.
Because I made my point earlier.
Okay.
That's why I don't know why you're curious.
Going into fourteen?
It's okay, it's okay.
Onto fourteen?
Now we're at event.
Matta Mayor at seven twenty.
Five minutes.
He knows, I told her, okay.
So we're on Event Management Services?
No, the adopt, oh, mm-hmm. Oh, it's fourteen, right?
Thirteen.
About thirteen still. Event Management Services at Holbrook Corner Park and we have Robert, he's going to give us.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, as you know, our last uh permanent vendor for Event Management Services uh terminated our contract back at the end of December of last year. Um, we brought forward to you a request for proposals to find a new vendor. Um, and in the interim, we had been working with uh temporary staffing services to kind of help bridge the gap. Unfortunately, we did not have any respondents to the request for proposals. And so we are coming back to you for uh feedback and direction. Uh, you have a copy of the um request for proposals that we issued last time. Any suggested modifications or any additional outreach that you think we might uh be able to do to get somebody? It is still a challenging time for event managers. Um, there was a big bump up right after COVID opened up and then things kind of have slowed down. Um, the good news is that now that the weather's changed, we actually are seeing a bit of a bump up of usage at the park and reservations that we have had, that we've had and um like I say, having a, a real vendor with a vested interest in managing the um events at the park um is a benefit to us as a town and um to the vendors. So we're hoping with um your direction, we'll be able to find somebody new to help us.
So open for questions.
Open for questions, yes.
What is the status with Sodexo?
Um, I, I'll leave that to Anthony to answer. I know that Anthony had conversations with Sodexo with with regards to some interests, but they have not yet, to my knowledge, submitted anything um in, in writing in terms of a solid proposal.
I have another question.
Okay.
So uh it seemed that in the staff report, um the annual revenue that we're kind of getting now is a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand a year. Is that right? And then the cost of staffing somebody is about ninety thousand or so?
Well, I, I'm going to say that our, our revenue has fluctuated a bit. It was really, really slow um for, I don't say probably, for, for a while. And things are just now starting to pick back up. But um the relationship, the type of contract we have with our vendors has varied over time. So we've had contracts historically that we did a revenue share on rental revenue. So they did marketing, they booked events, they got a share of the revenue. Our last vendor didn't ask for a share, so our revenue increased substantially because we didn't Our last vendor didn't ask for a share, so our revenue increased substantially because we didn't have to share it.
Yeah, but they thought they were going to make money off of it.
They thought they were going to make money off of catering.
Right.
They didn't make as much money as they needed to.
I guess, uh, one more question about that, about the financial uh impact of maybe hiring. Um, a staff member, maybe two staff members to do what an event coordinator would do. Cause that's what we used to have years ago. We had a hire, you know, a staff member before we started, you know, but. To juxtapose that to uh offset the revenue, we probably wouldn't make much.
Uh, I, I think that it's gonna, at, at the end of the day, it would cost us money.
It would, okay.
Do a pension.
All right, so then I have a comment about that.
I have, I have two questions. Is the state, we're, we're about to do renovations to some of the rooms. We're going to. Change the, the floor's kind of dirty in there and some of that's on the books. How much do you think is the state of the facility in terms of? Is that why we're having, is that, how big a role does that play?
It probably has some impact, but um. I don't think it's that large. They come in, they see the facilities where they are. We have made substantial improvements to the park in general. We are planning to make substantial improvements to the, the venues. Ideally, we have the input of an expert that is leasing it out to say this floor versus that floor.
Yeah.
Um, to help us make those decisions. Um, similar to when we did the uh bathroom renovations at the pavilion, we had our event services. Person kind of give us some ideas about this material or that material. Um, kind of helps so they can help sell this place a little better.
So.
If the, if that helps answer.
Yeah.
And the reality, I mean, once we figure out exactly what we're going to do. Um, it still takes a little time to get. The contracts in place um to get the work done and we'd have to. Pick an ideal time to do the work such that it doesn't impact events, so. Uh, probably sometime winter or so is probably the best time to kind of do that sort of work.
So we might get more rentals when the facility looks better. When you sent the RFP out, was it all caterers? Did we go to event planners? Cause that's a whole other field of people and this is event planning job. Cause we kind of seem tied to the, the new split.
So we sent it to a variety of things ranging to uh from chambers of commerce. To event management groups, you know, professional organizations or whatever, but. And a handful of vendors that have. Used our facilities in the past, as well as there was one vendor that was interested last time, but they didn't respond. Um.
Probably out of business.
Um, but.
So you felt we've ret, we've reached event planner with the RFP?
I was gonna say, it's hard to say because we get solicitations from. We didn't market it and pay for a whole bunch of money to get it out into publications and. Event plan, event management magazines and that kind of thing, predominantly because that's not really our, our business.
No.
And it's really, if we can figure out ways to get, what we can do is we can comb our reservation list a little finer. To see who's been, who has catered in the past, but. Because we had a, a caterer managing for the last few years. It's, the list that we have is going to be more pre-COVID and half of those may be out of business already.
I also have a question.
I'm not on the RFP.
I, I have one more question. One other idea that's come up is we heard earlier the EPC asking for event management. Hire to help with Earth Day. And I, I hear what Elizabeth's pointing out, that if you hire someone, you're. Eating up most of your profit of the whole thing by hiring that person. But I'm wondering if there's a way to share that person across other things, like they could work on Earth Day, for example, and be the extra hands that. Anthony may need and give that person. Is that the kind of thing we've even considered or is that?
Well, I, I think that one of the things that needs to be considered is that, so there's the cost. Let's say if we hired a staff person. Full-time or part-time, it really doesn't matter. There's the cost of that staff person. And then there's the cost of all the other things. That the event manager does.
Yeah.
Such as marketing.
Go to wedding, party.
Um, getting, you know, getting the word out. I mean, cause one of the big things about having. A contract vendor is that they're actively supposed to be marketing. The park to get the business in and they have to spend some money to do that. So that's an expense that we would take on. And to be honest with you, I don't know how easy it is to find a permanent. Event planner. And then if you say, okay, well, it's only going to be part-time, how well that's going to work. I will say that there would be some synergy. If we had event, an event, contract event manager, that they would be perfect. At helping organize the event at the park because they'd know it.
Yeah.
In and out.
It would be their job. Um. Any other questions?
I have a comment.
Need a public comment? Okay, go for the comment. Oh, is there any public comments online or in the room?
Yeah.
Don't see any in the room? Don't see any in the room? Any online, Anthony? No, so let's open it up to comments from the council, please.
On page four oh eight of the PAC, um, item number, after item number seven. Uh, a, a while ago, years ago, um, the council decided that they would not let somebody take over the whole park. And I think that that should be an item that's written down as number eight in section A. That no, no event shall take over the whole park because. Residents come to the park and then they're told that they can't come to the park. That's, that became problematic a number of years ago. So I think that that should be uh an issue. Also, we're talking about hiring a, you know, an event planner. When you hire somebody, obviously you pay their salary, you pay all of their. Benefits associated with that and all that pension stuff. Add it together, you're looking at more than a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Is what our cost would be. So, you know, hiring somebody, I think is wrong. I think. We do have a part-time guy over there. He seems to be doing a good job. He seems to like the job. I realize he works for a different company. Um, you know, I've gone over and had a chat with him just to see, you know, how things were going. He really does like the position. Um, so I, I think that at this point in time, till we decide what we want to go do as far as. Generating more interest in it, you know, hopefully we can find a way to keep him on board.
He's put in his notice, council member.
He put in his notice?
He got another job.
Oh, that's terrible.
Okay, after we spoke so highly about him.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I made my comment.
Uh, the comment I have is that I'm curious about other cities where they have automated systems, like if you want to go rent. A section of a park or a state park, they have automated systems. And you go online on the website for the organization, you see the facilities, there's pictures and the whole thing. I'm wondering if some part of that could be implemented as a stopgap in between. And I'm also wondering if there weren't other areas, other groups that rent their facilities that we could share somebody with. So um.
So I'll tackle the second part first. Um, last time when we went out, we reached out to our neighbors. That have facilities that rent. They were not interested.
Where, so you got enough on that.
Hours. And then you run into the issue of their preference is going to be renting their facility over yours. Um, with regards to the second one. Um, it may work to audit, we'd have to look at whatever kind of software is available, but that would probably work best only for. The day use type permits for picnics and stuff. Um, not for a wedding rental where they need to know tables, chairs. They need to book a tour to kind of see the facility and that kind of thing.
And we have competing events in a small space during Little League season and other activities.
All right, I'm gonna. Elizabeth.
See you later.
Take over.
Sure.
Sorry, everybody. I gotta run.
The mayor's leaving the room.
No. All right, I can do my comment now.
Yeah.
Um, I say there's no harm in extending this RFP, especially if there's someone interested potentially in the wings, so. I'm all for seeing if someone else raises their hand. That seems like an obvious yes to me. Um, I think. Um. There, if no, at the end of that RFP process, if we haven't gotten any interest, I think we should have a more in-depth discussion about what we want for events at the. With the Jennings Pavilion and stuff, like do we want to spend a lot of money to have weddings there? I don't know how many weddings happen. I haven't seen one there, so.
Well, it depends upon the season or the, the year.
Yeah.
There used to be a lot more.
I don't know.
There, there used to be, it's many, it was two, two a day.
Yeah, yeah, a lot, a lot. And a lot of corporate events. There were a lot of corporate events that, you know, really brought in a lot of the revenue. Yes.
Just, um, George is pulling it up now, but um included in the monthly reports.
Yes, yes.
Is the park and rec report, which kind of outlines.
Right.
Um, the types of events that are being booked.
Yeah.
In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, there were five weddings.
Five weddings, okay.
All right.
Yeah, anyway, um, so right now, what, so uh we bring it back for comments. I, I, I just want to make one quick comment. And I, this is not a new comment uh that I uh am making because uh we've. Every now and then, over the years I've been on council, the park and park revenue has been an issue. The park, uh, the cost of maintaining the park. And for a period of time, council said, well, we don't have the money to maintain the park. And things like that, okay? So no money was invested in the park. It was kind of deteriorated. It was kind of getting scraggly and stuff. And I would say you have to maintain the park. There's no city, I believe. In the United States where their public parks make, is a revenue generator for the town. It's, I mean, it's very rare that a public park would be. Uh, the public park is a public park and it's a public service. And at some point, the, the town has to support that in whatever way uh they can. Maybe we just don't have events, you know, we don't have an event, uh, but it's just, um. But we have to have some way of controlling people when they want to come and, you know, have their little parties and stuff. So we do have to have some management about it. I agree with Stacy that we need to continue to put out the RFP. Um, I think that maybe we could. Uh, form a little ad hoc subcommittee to review and maybe rewrite the RFP. So that it's a little bit more tantalizing. It's similar to what uh we did for the um, the colets. Uh, we went out with a different RFP and then we can uh bring that back to council for approval. That's my, um, that's my thoughts.
If this round doesn't work?
Yeah, that's the way this RFP was actually created. There was input from a subcommittee of the council.
Who did that?
I think we're taking care of the park.
Was I did that?
Uh, no, I think it was, no, yeah, you were part of it. There was Rick in you, I think.
No, no.
It was, it was a subcommittee. I don't remember.
Was it, was it the last couple of years?
No, it was this.
No, it was him and me, cause we, we went over and did the thing, but that was like twenty twenty-one.
I think Bob Leeder was part of your, that was all Colet stuff.
You see, he was part of the Colet.
And I was part of Colet's thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, I, well, I think we need to, just because we did it once, we probably didn't do a very good job. And, you know, maybe we've, maybe we've learned a little bit more about it. We can do a better job this time.
I think part of, I think part of the issue with the RFP, this RFP, is it's sort of focused on catering.
Yeah.
And vending type services. So if you're, if you want it to be a broader audience, it needs some.
Yeah, yeah. So Stacy, would you like to be on that?
Make a motion or are we just giving you guys direction?
You're giving direction, uh, and then so if you want to send the RFP out again with input from a subcommittee, that would be the direction and I'll talk to the mayor about appointing a subcommittee.
Right, have the mayor appoint a little subcommittee, because I think the, I think the RFP needs to be rewritten.
The, the question, I guess, the direction is, once that subcommittee is created, they provide that input, do you want the RFP to come back to you? Before it goes out, or do you want to give the subcommittee?
No, no. Okay.
We're saying no, that after two people write an RFP, that it doesn't come back for review from the council. I don't agree with that.
Phil wants to be on the subcommittee.
I don't want to be on the subcommittee.
Didn't do it.
I don't want to be on the subcommittee. All right, let's.
Okay.
So it doesn't, it just provides input and staff then releases the RFP.
I think that would be up to the mayor to decide.
Yeah, talk to the mayor when she gets done with her medical thing.
The, the mayor can't decide that bit.
Okay, so wait, so hypothetically, if Sodexo is like in to the existing RFP, do we not want to entertain that until we finish rewriting?
Well, they're.
If they were to write in, I would think we should consider.
At this point, if somebody were to submit something, we'd take a significant look at it. Um, the alternate is if you have suggested language that you just want to pass on through George.
Yep, we can do that, too.
You can just pass it through George. We can take a look at it, edit it as appropriate and release.
As a group.
I have no, I have no input to give to you.
I think that it's nice to collaborate with a fellow council member in like a little ad hoc subcommittee. So that you can kind of brainstorm together and then maybe that subcommittee can throw it at George for um consideration.
I think Stacy and Elizabeth should do that. I agree with that. I'm in favor of that.
But you don't trust us enough to just let us go without you reviewing it?
No, I, I don't need to review.
No, we give it back to George and let George review it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That was a, that was a, a three all.
Motion passed.
Okay, great. Getting spicy, guys, and we have one last thing.
The two.
Two things.
Do we want to have an election in November, or do we want to just go down to three council members? Get things to be a little bit more efficient, okay? I'm in favor of the, of the, of the three.
Elizabeth, how do you feel about that? You're up for reelection.
I serve at the pleasure of the.
Okay, all right.
We do need a motion and a second and a vote on the items on that particular item and public comment.
Thank you, I was just about to say.
I'll make a motion that we, um.
Public comment first.
Uh, is there any public comment? Andres, did you need to say something?
No.
Did he was just saying get public comment.
No, I was just making, we need a public comment.
The whole day.
So um, there's no public comments on this item number fourteen, which is uh to adopt a resolution to consolidate and call the November fifth, twenty twenty-four general municipal election. In contract with the chief elections office for election services. I will make that motion that uh the council. Um, adopt this resolution. May I have a second?
You should second.
I, I would love to second it after we have public comment as is required.
Wait, we did.
Okay, then, yeah, I second.
Yeah, you were sleepy.
I was too busy.
And just to be clear, there are three recommended action, there are three recommended actions. It's the resolution. It's authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the county. And also requesting that board of supervisors consolidate this election with the general election on November fifth. So. The motion should be for all three of those.
I, I, I move, we approve all three of them, as stated by Andres.
So you amended my motion and there we go. Let's, uh, I, I'll second that and uh call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
We did it. So I did have a question, uh, cause it talked about the twelve thousand dollars.
For item sixteen?
Well, the attachment, the, yeah, yeah. I mean, and then there was more that said additional costs. What additional costs?
For item number fourteen, you talked about the election.
Uh-huh, attachment number two, uh, section five. It recognizes that additional costs will be incurred by the county of San Mateo by reason of this consolidation and agrees, and we agree. To reimburse the county for any justifiable costs and services.
Right, it's a consolidated election, so it really depends on how many items end up on the, on the ballot.
So it's a open-ended.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But historically, we've come in under what we've budgeted for, so.
Okay.
In this budget year, we've appropriated twelve thousand dollars. It's not that likely that we'll.
And if there are only two candidates, then you can cancel the election and save the entire twelve.
That is true.
Right.
If we only have two candidates, pull nomination papers, then.
Well, okay, let's not talk about it. Okay, so we already passed that. So we're going to go on to item number sixteen, which to me is the most important. Part of what we are doing here tonight.
Here, here.
And without this approval. And without this approval of um item number sixteen, which is the city manager's performance evaluation. An approval of amendment to the city manager employment contract, we would not be sitting here, okay?
Well, we might be.
We would, we just wouldn't have a city manager.
Oh, good, we could have somebody else.
Be shenanigans.
Oh, you think, you think? Okay, this man signed up for brutality.
Yeah, you know, I mean, okay, but let's go ahead and vote on this and let's move on.
Okay, do I have a, uh, does anybody have any questions about it? Are there any publics members?
Just for the record, I I need to state that on.
He has to review.
June fifth, the ci- city council met in closed session to evaluate the general manager or the city manager. And determined that based on a comparative salary analysis, a five percent equity adjustment was in order as well as a two point four cost. Two point four percent cost of living adjustment, raising his salary to two hundred and eighty seven thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars per year. The council has also decided to grant the city manager a twelve thousand dollar one-time bonus and with that, back to the council.
Andres, I'm so glad you're here to have read that and said that.
He's been waiting all meetings for that.
I I did want to make a little um correction in the um staff report, the report at the bottom, at fiscal impact. Because it says two thou- twelve thousand increase for the bonus, it's a twelve thousand as a um, as a bonus.
One time.
And in the, in the um amendment to the employment agreement, the language is correct. Because it talks about a one-time bonus in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. So, um, any questions on that? Any public, any comments?
Nope.
I'll make the motion, I'll. You can move it.
I move that we approve it.
And.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'm gonna second it, cause we, in our closed session, it was a unanimous vote as a reminder to approve this, so.
Okay.
No break.
Except I, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright.
Ow, can't touch this.
Alright, thanks, guys.
Hurting this.